All right, call the meeting to order at six thirty. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Present.
Give me a second.
Here.
Rusty Peterson.
Present.
Rusty Bluthard.
Here.
Rusty Berman.
Here.
Rusty Dominia.
Here.
Here.
Present. First item on the agenda is the mayoral reports. We have a couple of announcements first. We would like to acknowledge a couple national recognition days or holidays. So the first one we want to recognize is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, which was January ninth. So again, I want to thank all of those that work in our law enforcement department here. Secondly, I want to acknowledge and remind everybody that Monday is a national holiday, which is Martin Luther King Junior Day. So again, please remember to think about all the sacrifices that were made by that individual on that day. I also want to acknowledge that we had two passings of village employees or former employees. One was Barbara Ruhlbach, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. And most recently, a longtime village employee and public works employee, as well as a member of the fire department. Mike Glynnowitz, who passed away at a way too young age. For those that are interested, his services are this Saturday at Strang Funeral Home. So I just want to announce that and keep them and their families in your prayers. All right. So we have, I think we have a couple cheerleaders here. So we have number one is the Antioch Vikings Featherweight Cheer. First place state champions. All right. So congratulate them. All right. So some of the highlights of their championship, we have the Featherweight Cheer first place champions had a score of seventy eight point two seven. Two first place wins and a second place win at competitions throughout the season. The head coach is Amber Rank. Amber right here in front. The assistant coach is Heidi Helpcamp here. And then the question I was going to ask is already answered here for me. These are mostly fifth graders. Is that correct? Okay, well, good job and continue with the good work. And before, you know, I'd like you to come up here so you can be recognized by the board and take a picture and show us your medals that you guys received at your competition. Okay? So if you're on that team, come up here. Don't be shy. All right, here's the trophy. Yeah, everybody, everybody.
All right.
Gets to keep that at their house.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So I'm going to have Jim Moran, who's our, does our communications. He'll take some pictures for you and anybody else, and then he'll share those with you. So.
Just remember, don't.
All right.
Don't be the one person to blink.
You want to get your foot out.
No, it's fine. Why don't you do a pyramid? Why don't you do a pyramid?
All right. This team are short enough. We could see over the top.
Didn't come up.
All right.
I think we're all looking in that direction. All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Couple more pictures.
Couple more pictures. All right. So hey, before you leave, I want to do your shortest and best cheer that you guys know. Okay? All right. You ready? Who's in charge? Who's the captain? Who's in charge? The coach? Yeah?
No flips.
Yeah, no flips. We don't have a lot of room here, but. All right. All right, no hitting each other. Get us spread out.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold my coffee.
All right, good job. Congratulations. All right. We have another championship team. We have the Antioch Vikings JV Cheer, which were the second place state champions. And I know they're not going to let those fifth graders outdo them with the cheer. So we have the second place team with a score of seventy nine point eight seven, three first place wins and a second place win at competition throughout the season. We have a head coach Christina Barrera. Where? Oh, we're here. Okay. Assistant coach Nicole Scott Nicky. Where's she at? She here? Nope. And again, you guys are sixth graders, so I expect this to be a little louder than the fifth graders. Why don't you guys come up here and take your picture and give us your best cheer that you want to do for the evening?
You gotta join them.
Yeah, I don't look good. Are they more? Oh, yeah, they're getting close. I have, I have a seventh grader and a freshman and they're too cool for me now. So I get it. All right. All right. All right, look at Jim over here. Say Vikings.
Five, six, seven, eight. Go Vikings!
All right, it's your turn to give us your cheer for the who's, yeah, who's? All right. Thank you. I know Rusty Pierce is a big cheerleading fan. He wanted to say something too.
Yeah. The cheerleaders that are here don't know it, but my daughter, my older daughter, who's now a mother and I'm a grandparent because of her, was a cheerleader from the age of six up and all the way through high school, varsity cheer. So I know how hard these girls work and what a, what a true sport it is. So they should be congratulated. But I also know how hard the parents work and the parents should get a round of applause because it's, it's a never ending job. Whether you're doing hair, putting uniforms on, running them everywhere. Dad's figuring out how to put a fancy hair curl in for a competition. It, it's never ending. So I think the parents need a round of applause too.
All right. Well, thank you guys for coming in. Tell your mom and dad you want to, I'm gonna take you out for dinner tonight somewhere local. And we have a few more, a few more announcements and then we'll you guys can, won't have to, unless you want to sit through this whole meeting, we could make you listen to a lot of stuff, but a couple more mayoral announcements and then we'll take a break before the citizens addressing the board. First is, there's been some, I just want to give an update. We do have a municipal bond that was acquired by the village, paid for by sales tax. I did ask Finance Director Zeta Torres for an update on the amount of the bond. We currently have twenty million nine hundred forty eight thousand five hundred twenty three dollars in that account. One of the, I guess, consequences of what's going on in the economy is we do have accrued a bunch of interest on that account. To date, we have accrued two hundred forty six thousand five hundred two dollars in interest and spent six hundred and seventy four dollars of that account. So we'll continue to hold that money for these projects, which you'll hear about tonight, including the Pittman Project and accrue as much juice on that money as we can. So I wanted to announce that. And then also, the closing on what will be the future Village Hall is scheduled to take place on January nineteenth, which will be the Semper Building. So we will be closing on that building and moving forward with that project. Other than that, have fun. Go to wherever Anastasia's Culvers, wherever you pick. All right. All right, thank you.
We're down to a regular six or seven people.
And hopefully the temperature. Trina. For Mary, we want to even just push the heater down and see what the, what the heat's at on the thermostat. What does it say?
Seventy three.
Doesn't feel warm in here.
It is warm in here.
It's not that warm. Perfect.
That's seventy three.
You have the
It's weird.
It's John Doe who's on the list. He never said.
Yeah, he never. Again.
All right.
You're gonna speak at our meeting?
Oh, no.
Okay. Is it just handed down now? You're welcome. You can address the board or you can do it for me.
That was your heartbeat.
That's awesome.
All right. Energy level just went way down. All right. Next item on the agenda is citizens wishing to address the board. I have given the sign in sheet. We have one person sign in. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the board? If not, I'll have the clerk read the ground rules for open comment and go from there. Oh, and also there's going to be some interest, I believe, online regarding especially item number four on the agenda. So the trustees are making comments tonight. Please do your best to speak into the microphone. We already had somebody request that. So thank you.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the village and public input is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous and board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the mayor reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment of a repetitive nature and/or limit the amount of time for public comment. The board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during public comment period. And we have Ainsley Wonderling. Say my name.
Yeah, make sure you're speaking into the microphone so you hear you on soon.
Ainsley Wonderling, and you don't, you don't have to spell it. Okay. I am the volunteer director of the Lakes Region Historical Society. I am also the president of Antioch Historic Preservation Commission. And I am here speaking from my personal opinion, not from either one of those organizations, but I want you to know where my background lies. Regarding the photograph that I was shown of the proposed gazebo, I feel that it's completely inappropriate for downtown Antioch. If we were in New Orleans, if we were in London, if we were in Paris, perhaps, but the village has strived so hard to maintain the quaint charm of downtown Antioch and a glass and iron structure is just not following along with that. That plan, ghost signs and the facade grants, don't jive with this. When you first see it, as you approach it, it looks very oriental. Looks like a Japanese pagoda. When you think about the care that it would take, the gutters, I'll call them gutters, the glass would have to be clean. Those gutters are going to fill up with dirt and leaves and Public Works is going to have a job keeping it clean or it's going to look terrible. And it has no bearing on anything else around it. I would like to urge the board to look elsewhere for more plans. Possibly it could be rectangular, it could be what do they call it? Polyoctagon shape, not just round and have a roof that would perhaps with a bell tower or a cupola, small bell tower possibly mimicking the Methodist church or the museum, which would look much better as you're coming down the street than a glass mausoleum. And I just think it's completely inappropriate. And also the price is astronomically ridiculous. And whether there's money set aside for that or not, there's no reason to spend that kind of money on something that is so anti what the village is doing for downtown.
Thank you. All right. First and only item is the consent agenda. We have the approval of the October, December fourteen, twenty twenty two, public hearing of regular meeting minutes as presented. Have a motion and a second to approve.
Don't move.
Motion trustee Bluthard.
Second.
Second trustee Dominiac. Roll call, please.
Aye. Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is regular business consideration and approval to ratify the December twenty ninth, twenty twenty two payment of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of three hundred fifty nine thousand one hundred eleven dollars and sixty three cents. Do I have a motion in a second? Motion trustee Maisick, second trustee Dominiac.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye. Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty nine cents. Do I have a motion a second? Motion trustee Maisick, second trustee Pierce, roll call, please.
Aye. Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number four. Consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator purchase a gazebo from Chicago Lightworks for the Village Green Project in the amount of four hundred ninety eight thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and forty cents. Resolution number twenty three oh one. Do I have a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Motion trustee Dominiac.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. We have Kevin Clark online. I see Jim Kime has joined us from a really nice place and
In his basement.
Okay. All right. So because there's a lot of interest in this, we're going to discuss it. You know, I'll let, I'll let Kevin give his, you know, background and Jim chime in, let trustees discuss debates, similar to what we would do in a cow meeting, but let's you know, have the conversation now so we can keep this project moving without too much delay. So Kevin, you all set?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Good to, good to see you again. I wanted to just, to me, this is a reminder of where we are in the process. Getting a chance to talk about where we've been and where we're going. Obviously, this is a super exciting project. We started out looking at your downtown, right? This was part of the overall downtown plan. Thinking about all of those spaces and how we make it better. As we did that process, we engaged folks. And because there wasn't really a solid vision for what was called the Pittman Property, we're calling it Village Green. And so that discussion was about creating a program and creating a vision, right? And that rose to the top from the downtown plan, really, really starting there. Engaging people on the street. We were at wine, we were at the Wine Walk, we were at other events downtown, getting opinions on various elements. And so that's where we started. Then there was the formation of a steering committee and we've been back to the steering committee six times over the, over the course of the, of this year or the past twenty twenty two. And part of that is starting from that broad level and narrowing it down. You know, so that when we came back to the board with a, what I call a design development package, which I'll flash up there as a reminder of where it was last time, that came with a number to say, hey, here's where we are with the number. So that when our team, Mike Jansen, we strand and the engineers and our team as the designers keep refining and getting into construction documents. We can, we can have a project that everybody feels good about and needs expectations and budgets. And the element tonight that we're talking about is the gazebo. I'm going to share my screen really quick. Had a couple of things. Just to remind everybody. Last time I was here, we, we showed these images. And this was out of our steering committees. Kind of, I should, I should go, let me go back to this really quick. This is what we showed our steering committee. We had a number of options. We didn't start out with any selections on materials. And everything from paving to landscape to these important elements that are going to be focal points as noted. This is going to be visible. This is going to be what you guys are creating. I don't even know if you're ready for it because it's regional. People are going to come to this park from all around. And you're going to have, you have great events and this is going to be a big part of it. So when we started to think about the, the gazebo or the, what we call the pavilion, we showed options. The steering committee unanimously selected this feature and as it fit within the plan. And from there, we went to the village board, we created the renderings of which we had three kind of views. Now there are options with this and we thought it needed to be simplified some, making it feel open, making it feel welcome, making it feel flexible. These are important things because, you know, as I've seen, as I've seen the option, options with this, it can feel a little closed off. We wanted to make sure that it was an element that had transparency and kind of walk through a number of things from different vantage points within the site. So to me, this is, is a good discussion. I'm, I'm excited about direction. I know you got a lot being a designer because everyone has opinions. But we want to do what's right. We want to do what creates that vision and, and ultimately all the things are working together on the site. So we've been heading in a direction where all of these materials and everything we're doing, we feel is cohesive and will create that, that framework for a great place that people are going to be coming to from all around and for a really long time. I guess I'll stop there. I don't know if you want to add anything, Jim, or anyone else, sir?
I, I do have a couple of, a couple of comments. You know, the conversation about the gazebo I think is spurring on maybe a more primary topic about what the community aspires to be. The word transformative has been used many times during this process about this project. So it begs the question, what are we aspiring to be? What, what are we aspiring to transform to? I've heard many times that we want more for the community, more for the downtown, more dining options, more shopping options. What we build today is going to set the tone for what we aspire to be. If we want to transform the downtown and encourage investment in fine dining and shops and higher quality construction in general, then we should set that example with what we build today. This may not be an easy decision. Some may view this as bold. But in setting a new course for the future, if we do what has been done before or what is easy or, you know, if we do that, we shouldn't expect a transformation to something better or something different. We, we're paying homage to the roots and the heritage of the community in many respects in this park. But for maybe this structure, I, there is nothing like it in Antioch. I acknowledge that. But that doesn't mean that things that have not been done should not be done in this community. I, I think by being bold, I, I think we're setting the table and for the investment. I, I think we're telling the world and the community, the development community, the investment community that we want something better. We want something of higher quality. And while some may view that as a little risky, I think with, with risk and being bold comes reward. And I think we'll be rewarded in spades. If we do something or do this in a way that shows the community of what we expect. So I'm, I'm I'm encouraging the board to vote for this. If you know me, I typically don't fall on a sword or or, or, you know, ask the board to vote a certain way, but I feel very strongly about this project having been through the process and having taken great effort through the design team with the village board, with the community. To allow this process to play out and to, you know, take our design process and see it through. There's been a lot of support for this. I, I think you may end up with some criticism. There may be some old school people who your families that you know, aren't going to necessarily look at this as what belongs in Antioch. But I, I do believe strongly that we need to have a vision and to bring Antioch forward. Of course, we're going to pay respect to the town environment, but I think this really adds to it. It doesn't take anything away. I think it adds to it in a big way. And I think Kevin's absolutely right that this is going to be not only the centerpiece or a showpiece for this park, but for the entire community. And it's going to draw people in from miles around. So I'm going to encourage the board to vote in favor of the resolution to purchase this gazebo. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right. I am just going to make a couple of statements just for not to sway anything, but just to point out a couple of facts in the way this process went. We did go through a community based, I guess, polling or census and this design was overwhelmingly chosen by the community. All of the renderings that we've seen and approved to date, including the designs of gazebo, this was one item that never seemed to be in question or debate, I guess, compared to some of the other items. One of the other things I wanted to check because I too had sticker shock when I heard the number, but I asked the clerk to pull what we had agreed to when we looked at the budget for the park and the gazebo in the budget was five hundred thousand dollars. So it does not deviate from what we originally discussed. I also would like to clarify and maybe Kevin could get into this further that I think a little bit is thrown off by the fact that we have this picture of a gazebo that is the same or similar in a park in Chicago. And we do not, if I understand this correctly, it doesn't, it does not have to be the same exact thing. It doesn't have to be the same exact color. It could have modifications to the design, including the statues, some of the ornateness, some of the lighting. I believe that can all be modified. I don't want to put words into Kevin's mouth, but I think that all needs to be considered. I believe we don't go in the direction that we've seen on the drawings where, you know, literally starting from scratch there. And I think one of the other items that we need to consider is, you know, with this money that is bond money that we are make, have made another quarter million dollars in interest on this money that should be considered when we're going through this project. And that being said, I always will say that I don't want to call them cheap, but Jim is always very fiscally responsible. So if I'm ever going to rely on somebody not to overspend on something that he doesn't believe is fiscally responsible. I rely on him and I believe a lot of the village employees rely on him for that, I guess, reining into the process. So with that being said, we'll start with trustee Pierce.
Where do I start? First of all, I just want to address.
Yeah.
I'll start at the very beginning. First of all, I don't appreciate trying to be shamed in a speech by a village employee. I'll start at the very beginning. First of all, I don't appreciate trying to be shamed in a speech by a village employee. I do believe that risky doesn't mean that I have to abrogate my responsibilities as a trustee. And, and just go forward spending $500,000. So I, I didn't appreciate that, that some of those comments that were made. Going forward from there, I do wanna be bold with this and I do wanna be transformative. But bold doesn't mean, it may, means it may not flow and I want this to flow. I want when people to show up there that it flows. I, I'm concerned, I am concerned about the cost. It is sticker shock. When we started designing the park, we were designed, we were talking 7.5 million, then it kind of bounced up to 10 million. As we got actual figures and started figuring things out. Now we're, my understanding is up around 11 million to do for this park. So that, that does concern me and to be given something on a Monday. For $500,000 with a drawing that isn't even what we're gonna buy. I, I can't vote yes for this at this point. I may in the future because it may be bold and it may be what we need. It may be, it may fit in the community. But I'm not gonna vote yes in three days on $500,000 on something I haven't seen. I, I never shop caravan and I'm not gonna shop. Sight unseen. I, I would like to see what our final product would be for $500,000. I would like to see size and dimensions so I can figure out if it's gonna fit within the park. I'd like to see other options. There's, there's gazebo's in those drawings that are plain and simple and kind of blend in. This one stands out. What is the cost of plain and simple blending in and flowing with the park? What is the cost of standing? Well, we know the cost of standing out. It's $500,000 plus, plus the foundation, plus the brickwork and everything else. So I'd like to see some cost options and what other options are. And then the other thing, like I said, Monday, we received this. With the, with the non-final drawing. The only thing I ever relate to is this drawing. Friday, I'm in the city of Chicago. I'm going over to Lincoln to get in Wells Park, whatever it is. And I'm gonna look at this thing to see what it looks like in person, to see how big it is, to see how imposing it is. So I, I'll vote no tonight or I'll, I'll vote to postpone it, either one.
Thank you, trustee Mason.
I'm gonna be a little more blunt. I am more offended by our consultant trying to sell this to me. I'm more offended by Jim Keim trying to sell this to me. I am never gonna be sat in this seat and be told by two people, someone we're paying money to, to be sold to. That's the first thing. I will always, if I'm gonna be sold up in this chair, I will vote no every time. Second, there is no dimensions of how big this is, which, which trustee Pierce. So I can't do. Cost per square foot. I can't put this in my computer and say. Hey, how much does this thing cost it? This is more than a 3,000 square foot home. This doesn't even clue. This is the structure without the concrete. So what's the concrete cost? So that's an additional how much money? That's out of there. So I'm figuring that's probably at least 75, 100 grand. So now we're at seven, $700,000. Here's the other problem. We're gonna get, have to get ionic atmosphere. This is a lightning rod that you're gonna put in the center of the park with all this iron. Anybody that's played golf runs, they have a golf club in their hand. Now you're gonna put this much iron in the center of a field. Can't take cover. If someone, if, if any type of atmosphere comes. What, this is gonna be like the sawmill. The sawmill was a beautiful idea. Unfortunately, we had a little child, little boy pass away. That thing's supposed to be turning. That was a lot of money back then. That's not turning because it was a lawsuit. One, one lightning strike, this thing's gotta go. So half a million, $700,000. Would be waste, wasted money and they have to be replaced with the wood structure. No one's ever thought about that. And sirens go off. Cause now you gotta spend that kind of money. This is the silliest thing, ugliest structure. Plus, I don't think it fits downtown Antioch as, as I'm agreeing with Ainsley. So I would vote no on this thing. You guys, I've asked you guys. And the Republican just went through this to give stuff earlier, to give a $500,000 to give us two days. And our village administrator goes out of town, so we can't ask questions prior to the meeting. It's just ridiculous. Next.
Trustee Peterson.
Well, how do I follow that? Well, first of all, I don't think it's ugly. I don't at all. I think it's, it's quite lovely. It's a little ornate, but I heard that we can, you know. Have it built the way we want it. I don't know what the roof is made of. Is it glass? Is it glass? Okay, it is glass. But I, I'd actually like to see the structure to myself. I, I really would. It is a lot of money, but this is gonna be the showpiece. With the center of town. When you come down to Antioch from the north, right past the library, the. The road turns a little and as you come into town, this is what you're gonna see. So whatever we put there, it has to be a statement. Of, you know, what people who have never driven through Antioch are gonna see. And people who've lived here all their lives would love to see something like this. It's a statement piece. And it's going to be useful with concerts and. There are bands playing there. Concert in the, in the band shell. It's gonna flow to the wetland area where, where we have all the, the food trucks. It's just gonna be a. A huge park and a, a statement for our town and. You know, I'll meet, I'll meet you at the gazebo. You know, it's going to be a place where we're all gonna gather. There's going to be wedding pictures shot here and family pictures shot here. So. Whatever we decide on in this. We have to make sure that it isn't. It, it doesn't have to fit. The, to look like the, the sawmill. It, it doesn't have to look like anything that we have. We have beautiful old buildings from the last century. That are lovely. I don't know if you've ever stopped to actually look at them, but the brickwork. This just enhance that. And, and I, I think that we really need to take a look at. What we're gonna put in the center of this park. It's gonna be there for a hundred years. So whatever we do, I know that the price is awful. I mean, $500,000. However. Think about a wooden structure and how many times we're gonna have to rebuild that thing. Over a period of 70 years, the lifespan of this or a hundred years. We don't know how long this is gonna last, but. We're gonna have to rebuild an enormous structure, the same size as this. How many times over? So, I mean, we, we really need to look at this. So, anyway, that, I, I like it and I. I'd really like to see something different where the roof is, but. I don't like the statues. It's a little ornate, but. I think it's overall, it's lovely. So I have.
Thank you. Trustee Bluthert.
It's gonna sound strange, but I'm gonna say it this way. Each one of these opinions is accurate and correct. The problem is, it shows you that we all have a different opinion on what should or shouldn't go there. And, and being that. The time with Scott said about only having a couple of days to approve this and being the first time we've seen it. That, that is troublesome. There's obviously a lot of division about what we'd like to see there. I, I took that picture and I sent it out to a group of individuals, over 50 people. All live in the, the village of Antioch, or in Antioch. Not a single one. Now they didn't, I didn't give them any other options. Not a single one used the term. Nice, beautiful, perfect. What I heard was, doesn't represent Antioch. Too frilly, too lacy. Nice, but not for there. I sent it to a few musicians because we're talking about having entertainment and different programs there. Both of them said they would hate to play under something like that due to the fact that. The sun would be beating on them all day or as long as they're there. If they use a lot of electronic devices, they can't see it because of the sun. So they were against it for that reason. I agree about being bold and wanting to make this park a statement. The problem we have is we have three large items in a row in that park, the way it's designed. We have a concession stand, restroom area, we have a bridge, and then we have this gazebo. In my opinion, I think all three need to be cohesive and work together. Because that park is gonna be based on those three items. Those same pit, people that come for a wedding pitch are gonna be on that bridge or, and so on and. We wanna make sure that everything works together and. You know, once again, the three days to make a decision on this is a little tight. I understand about the, the, the need to get ahead of this and buy stuff ahead of time. So that we, because of lead times and so forth. I mean, I'm in that business, so I understand all that. But I also understand that this, we're not at a stage where we can agree on a design at this point because. We haven't been given options as a board. We've been given. Some small renderings, which I thought, and I believe the process was gonna be, we were going to get. More details and then make decision. I would never vote yes on something that says, we're gonna approve 498,000 on a gazebo. That we don't have a final design or drawing on because, or we can make changes. We could do this, we could do that. What, what's that price gonna do? If we make a change, does that jump up to 550,000? Does it go down? There's so many if and or buts with doing it in that process. I just can't get behind it. Now, I, I, this is just one I pulled up. I, I gave it to the board and I don't know if, I'll just show it here real quick. This is a gazebo in a park down in Florida. Now, it's a metal gazebo. It has a more typical roof. Something like that. I'd like to see, similar to what the other trustees mentioned, is comparisons. What does a gazebo like this cost? What is the, the, the lifespan of a gazebo like this? What is the cost of a gazebo like this? I wanna see some, some, you know, we have this money side. Yes, we have it in the budget, a budget number of 500,000, but that doesn't mean we have to spend 500,000. We have a lot of capital projects that we're doing in this town at this point in time. We're talking about a new village hall, which we talked about tonight. We're talking about a new. Public Works building. We're talking about this park. We're talking about other projects. So 200,000 here, 300,000 here that we use for this structure versus something else. Might be able to be used somewhere else to do another project at the same time. But once again, I'm, I, could I get myself to see something like this and a vote for it eventually? Potentially. Potentially, if, you know, not this structure as it is, but I could see us doing something like this, but I wanna see how it ties in together with the bridge, with the other. Features in the park before we spend money on one item. Because if it doesn't go with those items and it totally clashes. You know, they're not gonna come after you guys and say you guys made the biggest mistake in your role. They're gonna come after us. And say, what were you guys thinking doing this? And, and, and I'm willing to stand behind my votes and stand behind something we get behind. But I need to see some options and see the overall design of this park. In more detail before I'll agree to spend $500,000. Now, I understand prices could go up because it's 2022 prices. I'm willing to take that risk. Because I think we need more, more diving into the details because those renderings we've seen. Everything else was, was nice, but it didn't go into, you know, I just thought those were just placeholders. And we would get any more details. I didn't know I needed to zoom in with a microscope and go, oh wow, that's the gazebo we're gonna get. So I think we need to have a little bit more specifics on what we're agreeing to for those major structures so that we can. Make sure we're all on the same point, page when it comes to approving this. Because at the end of the day, when this is built, I do want it to be a, a, a huge impact on the village. I want everyone. We'll never get everyone to like everything we do. And I'm willing to take some risks, but I wanna make sure that overall. The board agrees and that we can all get behind a, a project that will. Yes, be a draw, but at the same time. Doesn't impact our, our, our tax dollars too much and, and maintenance costs. Everything else need to come into play. But we need to see all that at one time and I wanna see how. This structure plays with everything else. So at this point, I'm willing to, to push this off. If we have to vote on this tonight, I would be a no vote. But I would like to see us work a little bit more on this. I don't think we have to drag this out for months. I think this could come around pretty quick, but I would like to see some. Some different options and different things come into play.
Thank you, trustee Berman.
I have a question before I give my comment on this. What, as far as the pricing, now this is being manufactured overseas. It's, I believe it was Italy, I, that they said. What, how is that playing into, as far as how much does that increase the cost, being that it's. It's something that's being manufactured overseas versus here. In America. Does that significantly increase the price?
Well, the number is the number for what you see. The, that number is that feature. As we developed the cost estimate, so. Is, it's not. And it, it includes all, just to clarify a couple of things, it does just include what we are proposing. Which isn't the, the one in Wells Park. It's kind of more open like we show in the rendering, isn't as ornate. So that's what we priced.
Okay. And so I'm gonna, my. Initial thought when I looked at this. It really gave a strong vibe of New Orleans. Nothing against New Orleans, but being that this is Antioch and not New Orleans. It, it doesn't, I don't feel that it fits. And I've also spoken with residents here in Antioch and, and they've. They've said pretty much the same thing. I can't justify the price and I, I just, this design, I, I, being that this is gonna be a focal point, I, you know, it's. That and I feel like we've been pressured and pushed into a corner on this whole thing. This is a. Big, major thing that we're doing here. It's, it's a lot of money. And I don't think that it should be decided, we should be forced to decide on this. With only two days' notice.
Thank you, trustee Dominik.
I think it's beautiful. But listening to everybody's comments, you made me think of some things that I hadn't thought about. First of all, I know one of the concerns is that if we do something with a wooden structure, it's gonna take more maintenance, but I didn't think about. Looking at this particular picture and, and that's kind of was my reference point for this. Is that I thought that this was what we were gonna come, we were purchasing. So if this is not what we're gonna purchase, then some of the things that were mentioned about the maintenance, et cetera, are not relevant. Kevin, can you put the rendering back up? Is there any way to make that bigger?
Um, yeah.
That's the biggest that you can make it?
Let me try it. I can try, give me one second. Let me zoom, just zoom into the. Middle of the.
Looks like a sombrero.
How's that?
Okay, so the difference. From what's in this picture is we don't have the ladies holding the, the globe lights, correct?
Correct.
But the top. Is fairly similar?
The top is similar. The arch, kind of the archways between the posts. The posts themselves are similar. We do not have it raised up. We want it to be accessible. And we don't have the side railings. If you'll notice on that, the image, there are some side railings that kind of enclose it.
So and, and I think trustee Blueheart said it well. We all have a different aesthetic. Um, we've had discussions about signs in the past and everybody's got a different aesthetic. I like the side rails. Um, I don't see why we can't make this elevated. I think it should be elevated. And I guess my comments are really around what everybody else is saying is that, um, we should have more discussion about what it is that we would like it to be. I don't have trouble with the fact that it's metal. I don't have trouble with the fact that, um, it's more ornate. Um, as long as it doesn't have the ladies holding the glass lights. Um, I think it should be elevated, particularly if this is going to be a platform for performance. Uh, it looks like the picture of the one in Wells Park does have a ramp off to the side, so that could make it accessible. I think, I'd like to see that rather than flush to the ground. Um, you know, one of the things that, um, Ainsley mentioned was that it doesn't fit with, with the look of downtown and you know, if I think about it, Antioch's about a hundred and twenty-five years old and this was probably something in that era. So it kind of does actually from my perspective, tie to the beginnings of Antioch, maybe not, um, all of Antioch. But I think if we could customize this, what, and when I'm looking at it, I'm seeing similar to what we have in the packet, kind of that glass kind of going up. And I think, um, Ainsley made the comment about just the maintenance of what could collect in there and, and how do we keep it clean? I think that's another thing that we need to think about. Um, the other thing that I had heard about was there's no shade there. If that's going to be glass, then if you do have people performing, um, you mentioned trustee Blueheart that they wouldn't want to be under that, that sun, uh, for their equipment or else for their own, you know, protection from the sun. So maybe there's something we can do there. Um, I do agree that, and Jim, my question to you is, when do we anticipate that the architect is going to give us the drawings for the cafe? Because I think we need to have some consistency. I don't think they have to all matchy-matchy. I'm not a matchy-matchy person. But I think, you know, that we can't have the cafe look like nineteen thirty and then this look like eighteen ninety and then the bridge look like seventeen sixty. So how do we make sure that we have all those pieces to look like they're all kind of from that same era? Or we make the decision that we want to reflect different stages of the community, but then I think that's a different conversation. Um, I also would argue, or not argue, but point out that from my perspective, the gazebo is an important feature, but it's not the hi, the only highlight of this park. So let, I think we have to be careful that we don't over uh, sell, and that's not the right word, over convey a mystique about the gazebo. Um, you know, we have a tree in town that everybody was going to come from all over to see and, and I don't see the buses lining up for that. So I don't know if we can really say that a gazebo is going to bring people in from a lot of different places. Um, you know, I think trustee Mason's comment about lightning, I mean, that, I don't know if anybody's thought about that. I didn't think about it. Um, you know, how do we address that issue? But Jim, where are we with the design for the cafe and the, the bridge in terms of, you know, how these all pull together?
The, um, the architects Williams are, um, I, I think they're finalizing the um, floor plan and I think we're a week or two or maybe a little bit more away from having renderings of the elevations of the building.
So, you know, maybe what we need to do is hold off on this until we see those other components. Do we finalize the bridge?
Yeah, what you see in the rendering, um, one of those three D views shows the bridge.
So that's all been finalized?
It's, we're at seventy-five percent design at this point. What you're looking at is, is maybe not a perfect picture of what you're going to get, but it's, it's darn close.
So I'm a little more amenable to that design than I was, I, than I am to what's in our packet, but I think we need to take a step back and, and take some of these inputs and have people go back to the drawing board and make some modifications. Before we finalize the decision on it.
And I, I'll apologize for putting that picture in the packet. It wasn't intended to be a representation of exactly what we're buying. It was intended to be um, a, a, a picture that gives you um, a, a better feel for the detail and you know, what it looked like. I, I now think it was a mistake to put that picture in the packet. It, it seems to have created more confusion than anything. You know, what you're looking at in the rendering is, you know, that's, that's what the design is. Um, but, you know, whatever the board asks for, uh, you know, if they want it to be a little different, if they want, you know, I, I wasn't intending for that picture to be, you know, that's what you're going to get for your five hundred thousand dollars. It was meant to be representative of its quality. Um, its elegance, um, just to give you a better feel for what you were getting. That, that's my, what my intention was. It wasn't to do anything but that.
Thank you for that, Jim. So as I'm looking at the rendering, just want to make sure I'm clear, clearly understanding that roof is not glass, it's, it's
Kevin, can you speak to the roof? It's got, it's got, it's not transparent glass. It's got opacity, so there is shade with it. Um, so it's kind of fro, you know, like frosted. If you've seen that glass look like tempered glass.
Okay, so, and then I guess my final question is that what I'm hearing is that we can customize what we want. Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, there are elements, yes, they're within, within a framework, right? So there are elements that you could select to be part of it or not. Um, and so uh, you, you like the side rails or, you know, and the lighting and those kind of things. So um, yeah, there are components of it.
I would just be curious as to what the rest of the board feels about the fact that it's on the ground versus elevated. I mean, again, I just think if you're talking about this to be kind of a showpiece, which is what trustee Peterson was talking about is, is eye catching and it's for performance, then I think it needs to go up.
I mean, I, looking at that, I
So here's what I'm going to do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let, um, Kevin and Jim respond to any of the items that they heard today that they need to clarify or feel that they need, need to respond to, okay? And then we can go around the, around again. Um, but at this point, I am, um, we can keep debating it or, you know, go around one more time, but it appears that there is at some point going to be a motion to, uh, table this to the next meeting. So let's hear from Kevin. Let's hear from Jim. Let's, you know, go around with the trustees again, keep it brief, or if someone thinks it's appropriate to table it for, uh, next meeting. Um, I did see that the quote on the, um, project is good through the end of this month. It says January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Um, we also should probably, I think we also have a quarterly meeting coming up within this time period. So I think, um, with those things in mind, um, let's see if Kevin or Jim have anything to add and then I'll go around again.
Excuse me, your honor, could I ask, uh, the rest of the board that we not make a motion to table until everybody?
Sure, sure.
You, you know, I'd like a chance to circle up with, with Kevin and, and kind of listening to the board's comments. Um, you know, I, I think that might be a better approach. These gazebos are out there. I've, I've never heard of any that have been, you know, it'll certainly be bonded or grounded. I don't know that these gazebos are, represent a danger or they wouldn't be used. So, you know, I don't could it sustain a lightning strike? Yeah, I guess it could. Um, it would certainly be an insured, um, thing for us. So it's not like a lightning strike would necessarily be a waste of, of money because it would be insured, but I don't view this as a danger. Um, otherwise, you know, metal structures wouldn't be used anywhere. As for the maintenance item, um, yeah, i- anything with a, with a roof line and gutters, you, you know, it's going to have to, you know, leaves are going to have to get cleaned out of it. You know, I, I, I'm not as concerned about that. Um, will there be maintenance, like cleaning it? Yeah, yes, there will be. Um, I'm talking to the folks at Neri. You know, they said, you know, power washing and, and that kind of thing is, is, is about all the maintenance it needs. Doesn't need to be painted. Um, it's a very long-lasting durable thing is, which is why I was attracted to it. Um, in addition to its, its look and its elegance and it, and it's honestly being a, a deviation from, you know, what has been done before. Um, so I don't think I have a lot more to add than that. Kevin, do you have anything else?
Well, I, I think the only thing I, a couple of things quickly. I mean, first of all, no disrespect intended. I wasn't trying to sell the gazebo. I'm excited about the project and I think I think people are coming all around for what's going to be there. All of these great things that are going to be there. That's what I mean by people coming to to the park. Um, and, and second, I, you know, we can, w- we're trying to find the right balance. Um, I think it works with what we are designing. And, um, we're certainly amenable to working with, continuing to work with the board and the community to make sure that we're providing something that everybody feels great about. So, uh, it's a, just a discussion for us and, um, appreciate the, the discussion tonight.
All right, thank you. Um, one more time around. If I may use the clock, but trustee Pierce, you can start.
Um, I'm going to start off respectfully, your honor. Um, when we need to discuss something, I think we need to discuss it and the clock isn't an, an issue. Uh, I'm willing to stay as long as I need to. Um, other than that, um, for Kevin, I just want to tell him, you said nothing offensive to me tonight, so you, you're, you're fine. First of all, the rendering he showed with it on the flat ground looks more of a flow into there than when I'm looking at this picture. So this picture may have been a shock and a, and, and something, but I can't believe my company, if my, they're going to sell a five hundred thousand dollar product. They got demos, they got samples, they got drawings, they show what they're going to give. They're, they're not doing a phone calls. That's, that's okay. We got something that looks like this. What do you want to sell? And we'll buy it, then we'll customize it afterwards. They have all that stuff nailed down beforehand. This does not have that nailed down. So this must be Neri's dream to have somebody call them and say, we want this, we're going to, we'll give you what you want. I, I don't think that's what we need to do. Um, I don't, so I'd like to see what the final design is from Neri because the drawing and the rendering with it on level ground, no railings kind of blending in, it blended in, it kind of flowed. This, still, in my opinion, that's not what I'm looking for. Um, and I don't want to customize it afterwards. One of the things, the, the rendering showed what I saw, I didn't see glass top. That's not what I saw. I saw something durable and lasting and would cover. I, I'm concerned that in twenty years, we're going to be running around going, how do we replace the fifty broken panes of glass and the company doesn't make that glass no more? Do we have to replace all the glass? You know, so do we need replacement glass? I, I hate to say it, I, I, I have faith in little Johnny coming out with a BB gun and having um, so I, I'm concerned about the glass in here. I, I I, that's, those are my concerns. Do we need to buy replacement glass with this beforehand? They have it on hand? Or do we look at a different top? But other, otherwise, I think the, the other rendering is better and I, I'd be willing to table this for a couple of weeks to discuss it.
All right, thank you. And before you
I'm not making that motion.
No, I know, I know. I, before Ed, before Ed speaks, um, I just want to ask a question of Kevin. Um, I, do you have the, um, Village Green Pavilion options? Um, there's six photos on that page. Do you have that available?
Um, yeah, so what we showed the steering committee, mayor?
Yes.
Uh, yes, hold on one second. A bunch of, uh, items here, so, um, is this one you're referring to?
Yes, okay, so, um, yeah, that's it. So on the left is the large gazebo, which is reminiscent of the one you put in the picture. On the right is the smaller gazebo, which does not have the glass roof, which looks like it has a more, um, obviously metal or fabricated roof. It has the open floor plan similar to what we were looking for. So to me, that seems more like what the rendering is. So do they make that in the larger option and what would that do to cost if you know?
I would have to explore that. I, I, I don't know the answer to that right now.
Okay.
Can you make that bigger, Kevin?
Um, yes.
Yeah, scroll, scroll into the one on the right because that seems more along the lines of what we have in the rendering.
Can I, may I, can I show one more image? Because there is one that's almost exactly like this in Portland, Oregon, the one that we were showing.
Hmm.
Um, and it just came from this huge packet that they sent us. Um, so this is more, I think, along the lines of that, um, just for reference. Um, and there's a few images of it. Um, so you can kind of, the idea that, you know, the idea always was that we envisioned, because you guys have the band show, this isn't your primary performance space. This is more of a secondary gathering. Um, you could have seating underneath it, like this is depicted. Those are kind of the ideas. Um, but just wanted to show this. And we can go back to the other one if you guys prefer.
Sure, no, thank you. Uh, that answers my question. Um, trustee Mason.
All right. Parks, kids play football, baseball, grandma's sitting under the gazebo. Football goes on, glass breaks, grandma gets her neck sliced open.
You're an insurance man, aren't you?
I'm a, yeah. I mean, putting glass in a park? Not, and, and I agree with trustee Pierce. It's just a matter of time. Hey, let's go down and bust some windows with their, with, with throw some rocks at the glass. It's, how, how do you, how do you patrol there? We're going to have to have cameras up there to catch the kids. I mean, glass in a park? That, that, that's just trouble waiting to happen. Because you're going to kick up, kids kick footballs. I'm sorry. That, that picture right there is not a park. That's a walkway. A park is ground, kids are kicking footballs. You would not kick a football in that area. That's a dinner area. That's a walkway. Where you walk to different restaurants. That would be Woodstock Square. It's not a park. Glass in a park is just a dangerous thing. Should not have glass on a, on a building. That's, that's just, that's just, you know, it's just like the, uh, the, the brass tree that nobody goes and sees. You can't see it. Why don't we put that there? I didn't vote for that tree, by the way.
This, oh, not a tree. Trustee Peterson? Trustee Peterson?
Whatever it is, I didn't vote.
Um, I'd just like to, um, speak to Mary's, um, question, how the board feels, at least I feel that it should be elevated. Any gaze, any gazebo, I, I would like, if there's going to be performances, I think it should be and, you know, we could make it handicap accessible with a rim, so. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, trustee Blueheart.
I agree. I, I, on the elevation portion, I think it definitely needs to be elevated. I, I just, the, these additional photos you show of this unit look completely different in the, in the situ, in the settings that they're in. And some it fits, some it doesn't. And that rendering that you pulled up, I mean, it almost looks like it would be something at Great America that you go and get a taco under or something. I don't know what it was. It doesn't look, it's not going to be something that everyone was saying is going to draw people to Antioch to come sit under that gazebo. So if that's what we're trying to do, that's not going to do it. So I think we need to, you know, I don't think we're close to two weeks from being able to order this thing and I, you know, I don't buy things for five hundred thousand dollars and say, here's five hundred thousand dollars. Now let's just go and see what we can do to mess with it. I think we need to start with what their basic plan is and if we want to try to amend that, fine. If we want to try to alter it, fine. And come up with numbers, but it's not going to take, happen in two weeks. So I think we're rushing this. Um, I understand why we want to get it ordered because it's going to take a year to get if we do go with this company. But I think it's worth the wait because if we screw this up, it's, there's no turning back. We're not going to get this five hundred thousand back or whatever it ends up being. So I think we need to put the effort in. Um, I think we need more information. I think that the, what we were given as a board on this is, is, is not helpful because the picture should be what we're getting and I agree. You know, you, this, this company must have, I went on their website and their website was horrible. I couldn't find any information on there either. So if we're spending five hundred thousand dollar with this company just because of their name, they don't even have good pictures of this unit that we're, we're quoting and, and that bothers me. So I think we need to step back a little bit, take our time and, and decide where we want to go. And I think we'll find an option that incorporates everything that we want, but maybe it's not this company. And I think we'll find an option that incorporates everything that we want, but maybe it's not this company. There's gotta be other companies like gazebo's, correct? Have we looked at other companies or are we locked into this one since the beginning?
No, we, we looked, we, we had options that we showed, and very similar to what you shared, trustee. The Icon, I believe that's the, the company is Icon. There, there are a number of options. Just trying to find the ones that, that match and.
We're not, we're not ready to jump on this right now and I think we need to, it's been a gr, a very helpful discussion to me to hear everyone's opinion. But I think we, we need to spend some more time on this before we're ready to make that big of a financial decision.
Thank you, trustee Berman.
Uh, I, I agree. I think that we need to slow this down a bit. And then trustee Dominik had made a, a good point about, remembering that this is, you know, it's been thrown around that this is gonna be the main focal point. But, isn't that, that's, what, what we were saying as far as like, it's not necessarily the main, main focal point. It's, you know, everything, you can't have that be the main and then everything else just, be something different, like the, the naturalness of the rocks and the other materials that, we've discussed. And I think that does interrupt, the flow, the design flow, overall design flow, when you get to something like this.
Trustee Dominik?
Kevin, thank you for clarifying that you didn't mean that the gazebo is gonna be what everybody would come to Antioch for. And really, it is the park. And that's why I go back to the elements kind of all tying back together again. You know, I, I disagree that, that we can't have, your biggest challenge is gonna be that there's, seven people up here. Everybody's got a little bit different opinion. I personally don't think that it's problematic to have something that's got glass in it. There's glass all over town. And I, I do like the, Jim used, used the word elegance of this and I do like that word. I think we just need to, make it a, a little less ornamental so that it's not so frilly. I think somebody used that word. But I, I think I concur with everyone that if we could, if you could come back with some other options based on our feedback, it would be helpful, I think, and if the board could all get copies of those, get copies of that page that's got all the different designs on it. Maybe if, Jim, you could have that sent to us. We could, it'll help us kind of think a little bit more about what we might like to see and feedback that, to you and, and Kevin and, so that you can kind of start to, create an elephant based on everybody's input or a camel, whatever that, what is that joke? How do you make a camel? You have a committee or whatever?
Alright, so, do.
Like a motion to table?
Well, I think, uh, yeah, so trustee Dominik, uh, has a motion to, um, has a motion to approve, so you withdraw that.
No, a motion to table will supersede.
Alright, so, um, we have a motion to table trustee Bluthart.
To a, to a date, uh, to the next, uh,
Board meeting?
Well, I don't know if, can we get, can we put on the next cow or does it have to go to a next meeting?
I mean, I'm fine, I mean, I'm fine having these discussions like a cow at a board, so it doesn't.
Cause I, I don't see us being ready in two weeks to make a final decision to approve a purchase, so unless something miraculous happens.
Don't do a date certain. Just table it.
I'll just make a motion to table.
Alright, motion to table trustee Bluthart.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson? Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes motion carries. Alright, next item on the agenda. Alright, thank you guys for jumping on Zoom. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Alright, we have, um, number five on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution, authorizing the village administrator to engage JJ Henderson and Sons to perform, emergency design and repair work related to the wastewater treatment plant east clarifier. Uh, we have, I believe Denny Heimbrodt's here to present that item. And, uh, Mark, are you on the, for this item? Mark, okay, Mark, okay, okay, JJ, okay, Mark, alright. Okay, we have Mike with Strand on Zoom and Jim sticking around for this one. So go ahead, um, Denny.
So, um, we started out with Strand, brought them on to help us identify, basically what the clause was, what we needed to do. They're finalizing their drawings. Administrator Kine made contact with JJ Henderson. They were actually the contractor that in 2009, uh, expanded the treatment plant. So he contacted them to hopefully get any input or, uh, archive drawings, field notes, um, any type of help that they could, uh, give us and some insight on the situation that we currently have. So happens in 2020, uh, they actually did similar repairs to, I think it was Northern Rain, wastewater treatment plant, had the same, uh, heave of the clarifier tank. And it wound up being they pulled their floor out and did the proper repairs. So, what we're, uh, what we're hoping to do is with the brief discussions with JJ Henderson, um, and some of the insight that they, uh, had is to bring them on to our team. And have Strand, the village, uh, JJ Henderson to finalize the drawings that, will go for basically the reconstruction and the costs that will be tied to it. We don't, we have an estimate that Strand's provided, but really a contractor's gonna give us, a really firm scope and cost, along with, uh, we did find out that there is some lead time, piping that we will need. We didn't really know that until.
Thank you, Denny, and I apologize. I was still thinking about the last item, but I never asked for a motion in a second regarding this item, so. Motion trustee Dominik, second trustee Pierce.
I don't think it takes a motion for the staff to present something. Once we start discussing it, then you need the.
Yeah.
Just for clarity's sake there. How much longer are we gonna be dealing with this? This has been going on since summertime, right?
Yeah. And that's, you know, that's our hopes, you know, originally back. Um, we brought, uh, a contract for Sable to remove the equipment, um, so we could get ahead of it. As the engineers looked at the existing slab, and maybe what would be considered standards that it would be constructed nowadays or possibly what it would have failed, we have, uh, changed the design a little bit and Mike with Strand could, you know, answer some of those questions, but we're looking to beef it up, add more, uh, pressure relief valves, and, uh, de-watering, because we do realize there's a groundwater, you know, issue, at those locations. And we don't want the west clarifier to be the next.
Okay, I just, we're doing this on an emergency basis and it doesn't seem like we're moving.
I would, I would, trust me, I would like to have had it done in November, but, uh, between designing and, and, uh, taking core samples of the floor and understanding, you know, what was underneath it and doing some investigative work, uh, with the engineers and then, basically coming up with a design now, hopefully we'll start construction. Because I don't wanna, I don't really wanna be doing this in the spring when we receive, the typical high rain events.
And the other one, the heaves, and then we're telling people.
Just even the, the amount of, uh, millions of gallons that we have to run through the plant, uh, sometimes we rely on capacity. And that's also being considered in, what I would call the construction documents that we're, we're designing. That'll be part of, are we going to take, and have, uh, storage while that tank, right now we could fill that tank, um, and use it as storage and then basically pump it down, but we can't use it the way that it's intended. We actually may need, you know, uh, tanks or an overland pond to hold if we have that.
So what is your estimated timeline right now? Because you're saying you don't want spring to hit with lots of rain.
Well, uh, Strand, Strand, could possibly, um, give us a better, uh, timeframe is when they'll be complete, but I'm assuming, uh, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, their plan will be complete. JJ Henderson has actually already started making contact with some, uh, subcontractors, give pricing that, that, so he'll understand. Um, depending on the pipe lead time, that's important. But yeah, as, I would say in the next, uh, couple of weeks, we'll have a, a really firm, timeframe as to when we'll be able to start and have the drawings ready for contractors to form the work. Correct, and cost. And we'll be, actually, there's a two-phase approach to this. JJ Henderson is going to assist us in wrapping this up with an actual document for contractors, um, including them. So they'll come back, uh, with a second, Jim and I will return and, uh, produce costs, uh, to move forward with, with Henderson.
Alright, trustee Maisick?
I got nothing. I think this should have been started a while back, so.
Trustee Peterson?
I have no comments.
Trustee Bluthart?
No question.
Trustee Berman?
No comment.
Trustee Dominik?
No comment.
Alright, any other questions? If not, um, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Aye. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. Last item on the regular business is consideration and approval of an ordinance granting a variance, to increase the height of a sign at 309 East Route 173. Ordinance number 23-01-01, entertain a motion and the second waving the second reading.
So moved.
Motion trustee Bluthart.
Second.
Second trustee.
Second reading.
Second trustee Peterson. Mr. Garrigan?
Thank you, your honor. This matter comes to be for this evening for a variance for the property company knows 309 East Route 173. Uh, that we have, the applicant's actually requesting a, a variance. There's an existing monument sign. As you recall, there is a, uh, uh, previous car wash up there near the Menards. It's a planned unit development. The applicant, uh, which is Happy's Car Wash, recently purchased, um, this car wash, and has been working with staff over the past number of months to try to increase visibility. The applicants identified that, to increase business, they think there is a visibility issue. Based on their concerns about visibility, the applicant has requested a slightly higher monument sign. Uh, the existing signs we speak is currently nine feet. The applicant is asking for a variance for relief. They go up to 12 feet. Now, there is an existing, uh, EMB or electronic message board. That EMB sign is not being modified, so nothing's being changed as it relates to that existing, uh, EMB sign. I think in your packet you have your proposed, uh, sign, which just simply increases the sign face of this, um, again, re-imaging of this new, uh, business. Uh, the applicant's actually here this evening, be more than happy to answer any questions. This was reviewed by the planning commission and supported by the planning commission. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the village board has. Just for the record, there are a number of signs, similar signs out there, uh, Chase Bank Build, Chase Sign, and also, um, the Great Lakes Bank Sign are similar, uh, height, height as it relates to this proposed sign. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Michael, quick question. Those other signs, did they go through the same process?
The Great Lakes to go through a variance. I, I did take that through a variance process. Chase Bank, um, I think that's before my time. I don't recall exactly. It was part of the original PUD, but, generally most of the signs out there, at least on this side of, uh, PUD are actually similar so, so height sizes.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Pierce?
You know, when I first read this, what went through my mind was the fact we spent several years, it seemed like, writing our sign ordinance and coming up with the plan for the sign ordinance. And the plan has only worked very hard in that also. And I'm really a believer that we should be sticking to our, our sign ordinance. But I look over there, it is lower, it sits down. The, the other Great Lakes came in and got our ordinance and, I mean, a variance, Chase did, so I think there's precedent. But what I, I, I think the board should be very clear about, is just because somebody wants a variance to increase their visibility, it's not necessarily gonna happen. Because I know Taco Bell wanted sign changes, Walgreens wanted sign changes, Aldi's wanted sign changes. We, we made a lot of the companies stick to their, what, what our sign ordinance said. But, I mean, in fairness to the, the property owner, uh, the way it sits, I could see him wanting to make it a little bit higher. So in this case, I would, I would be okay with it. In most cases, I wouldn't, uh, because of all the hard work we did. If we wanna start giving everybody sign variances, maybe we should be changing our sign ordinance, which would take us another four or five years. The only thing I say to Mr. Happy is, good luck on your car wash. I, 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 I will tell you, before COVID, service there was great. After COVID, services declined. So more than a sign, service, 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 customer satisfaction will make you more sales than anything else.
Trustee, uh, Maisick?
Just a, it's a safety issue for you, because you're looking down at the sign and not up. So it's, it's a safety issue for that sign. You're looking down instead of that traffic. You look at that sign, that's always been a, not a sign at eyesight. You're looking down out of traffic. And that's just a sign that comes into merging traffic. It just, that makes sense. Bring that sign up for safety. There's been an accident, the guy, but the guy was driving too fast. Case in point, there's been a couple of close calls there that I know of. Just makes, makes, makes sense to bring that up dialogue.
Thank you, trustee Peterson.
I'm in favor of this, so I have no other comments.
Trustee Bluthart?
Um, I'm in favor of it and, and you've done a good job on my car, so I'm happy with happy.
Trustee Berman?
I don't have any issues with this.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Dominik?
I took my car there the other day. It's happy. It was very good service. Um, I'm fine with it.
Alright, um, no other discussion, roll call, please.
Aye. Yes.
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 Six voting yes motion carries. Um, I don't know if Jim's still, is Jim off? He's still there? Okay. Um, no, administrators report, um, none tonight. Village clerk report anything? Any trustee reports other than those submitted in writing? Alright, otherwise, oh, trustee Dominik?
Um, speaking of lights and signs, um, I'd like us to consider in the future, um, taking a look at our sign ordinance, vis a vis, um, the, the signs that are, uh, like Burger King and McDonald's, um, our billboards. We have, residents that live over by the bowling alley, there's a billboard there. And I know Director Garrigan is working with the owner, but those lights are shining, right into those people's homes. Uh, when we had a discussion a couple of weeks ago about a petition, our trustee Pierce brought up, the concern about lighting for the people that live on Lake Antioch and, um, a lot of the lighting that is directed toward the people that live on Antioch, particularly on the village side, comes from, the Burger King sign, the McDonald's sign. Um, so I think we might wanna, discussion at another date about whether or not we would like to, uh, put together an amortization ordinance for these signs, that gives people five to 10 year, whatever time period we, um, recommend, or pass, uh, to remove those signs and make them be compliant with our existing sign ordinance, that they're not, they're legally non-conforming. Um, the other thing I just wanted to make the board aware of is that, uh, as the liaison for the school districts, I am, am participating in the 34 strategic plan process. We had our first meeting last night. And, uh, there'll be a series of three more meetings as they update their strategic plan.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn the, uh, regular meeting. Trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second trustee Pearson, leave. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, meetings adjourned at eight o'clock. We will, um, start the committee, the whole meeting at eight oh five. Alright, call the meeting to order. Um, it is eight oh six PM. Roll call, please. Present.
Here.
Here. Present. Uh, first item is the approval of the November 30th, 2022 committee, the whole meeting minutes as presented. But I have a motion in a second. Motion trustee Dominik, second trustee Bluthart, roll call, please.
Aye. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. No mayor report, no citizens wishing to address the board. The regular, only regular business item on the agenda for the committee of the hall is. Jim Moran, a communications director, giving a summary of the. Social media and community outreach for twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I appreciate being here tonight to kinda. I wanted to share a snapshot into some of our village social media and our website performance and some of our outreach that we've been doing over the past year. And also I wanted to solicit some of your feedback, whether it's tonight or just ongoing. Yeah, I wanted to underscore the fact my, my doors open, so to speak, or email or phone. Whether it's something we're doing or something we're not doing, or if you see another community doing something, I, I would love to hear from you. So the, the report that's included in your packet. Is a combination of all of our social media that we use. I combined the village Facebook page, excuse me. The police department Facebook page, even though I, I don't actively manage that one. The police department does like ninety-nine percent of the posts there. But since it is a tool used by the village, I wanted to include it on here so you guys saw the, the reach we had. Also our Nextdoor page and LinkedIn and YouTube. So to talk first. Probably our most valuable social media outreach is through Facebook. And the village of Antioch is a community that's very engaged with Facebook. It's kinda neat to see the, the numbers that, that we see here in Antioch. In the report, this is as of the end of the year, we had thirteen thousand eight hundred and nine followers on Facebook. Earlier today, that number was up to thirteen thousand eight eighteen. If you compare that to other communities. City of Waukegan has fifteen thousand Facebook followers. Gurnee has nine thousand, Foxlake sixty-seven hundred, Libertyville fifty-four hundred. So it shows that the people here, it tells me two things. The people here are engaged. With what's going on with the village through Facebook, also people outside of the village come to Facebook to see what's going on. Excuse me. One of the highlights this past year on Facebook is we became Facebook verified. Which is the little blue checkmark on Facebook, which tells residents or anybody on Facebook that this is the legitimate village page. Out of the fifty-one communities in Lake County. Forty-three are on Facebook and only six of us are verified. So it's kind of a hassle. To work with Facebook to get the checkmark, but we got it and it's something I'm proud of and I wanted to make sure to mention that. The fun part of the report is seeing what people interact with. Our top Facebook post last year was when we announced the food truck feastable. That reached over thirty-three thousand people. Our top video was something, it was a. Video I took at the top of the sled hill of the tree lighting. It was a twenty-second video, reached sixty-eight hundred people. And then the communities that we reach, obviously Antioch. Lake Villa, Salem, Wisconsin, Lindenhurst and Foxlake are the, the top five communities that interact with us on Facebook.
Jim, what is an engagement? Is that somebody who actually responds, says something?
That's when people like, share, comment, click, click on a post, they'll follow a link, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the, the police department page, I, like I mentioned, I, I'd like to include these. Statistics so we can see what a useful tool it is. Throughout, one of the things I've enjoyed this past year is working with our police department. Personally, it's. I, I've enjoyed it and it's been fulfilling because police department has utilized our. Social media and public relations outreach to help them with crime prevention. And some of the other things that they've worked on. So you can see here. The, the, the reach, you know, they reached over three quarters of a million people last year through Facebook posts, which. Compared to the village pages, is substantial, substantially more reach. And I would say that's because of the content down there. People, people are interested when people start talking in Facebook groups, they share these posts. And that sort of thing. The top post on the police department page was when we launched the investigation into the search for Tommy Howe last year. That reached over a quarter million people or almost a quarter million people. Our top video was the press conference we had the day Tommy was found. That was, that reached over eighty thousand people. And the community is almost mirror village Facebook page with the exception of Kenosha. People in Kenosha are more interested in our law enforcement than events going on in the village. These three channels, YouTube, LinkedIn and Nextdoor, we don't utilize as much as we should. I would say I, I put more of my focus just because we get more traction on Facebook. YouTube is used mainly for these meetings, with the exception, this is a fun story. Last, right before Christmas, I took a video down at the public work yard of a front end loader putting salt in a truck. It was a minute and eighteen seconds and I put it on YouTube so I could send it to TV stations. And I, I said, you know, use this for B-roll, you know, whatever. And we had like six or seven views that day. I thought, oh, the assignment editors watched it. Then it got into an algorithm of people who, who like trucks or, you know, salt or winter, whatever. And like as of earlier today, I think we had over four thousand views of that video. So it tells me, you know, content drives viewership. Excuse me. Should have brought water up here. On the next, our media coverage, and me personally having been a reporter, this is the part of the job I, I love. It's fulfilling, you know, our top media coverage last year, what was it, the nationwide coverage of, of the investigation and search for, for Tommy Howe. But we, we had other things like the, the Pittman project here, front page of the Daily Herald, front page of the New Sun. Got a lot of traction on that, a lot of police stories, nine PM routine. The Narcan distribution, the, the video we made with the police department. All of that got a lot of media coverage and this is just a snapshot of, of some of that. Some of the highlights of the, the paid outreach and events that we did. We collaborated with ninety-five Will Rock Radio. To put on the Royal Bliss Concert, the kickoff concert at the Band Shell, over three thousand people were downtown. For the concert, we got tremendous visibility and it was a success on, on all accounts. The biggest feedback I heard the night of the concert was, I didn't know this Band Shell was here. Which was great to hear that because we're introducing people to our Thursday. Thank you. So on the second half of that sheet. Talk about some of our highlights with communications. Personally, I, I, I got my FEMA IMA certification for emergency management, public information officer training. We collaborated with Antioch businesses with our Shop Saturday, the Small Business Saturday Initiative. We did paid advertising. With Will Rock, Star One Oh Five has been huge with. Wine Walk and some of the other events we do downtown, WXLC, Light FM. Our communications goals for this next year. I'm working on street banners for downtown. That's something that was in the, the budget for this fiscal year. And I'm working to, to get some, some designs and ideas for that, that, that'll be forthcoming. An e-newsletter, this goes along with relaunching our antioch dot IL dot gov website. A direct mail newsletter a couple of times a year. I'm in the design process right now. Hopefully within the next month, we'll have our first one sent to residents. I want to launch a Twitter, Instagram presence for the village. And. Piggyback on the success we had at the Royal Bliss Show with another concert to kick off the summer concert series. The final part here is some of our website performance. Like I mentioned, we're in the process, we're getting bids now to relaunch our, our village website. This kinda, it shows. The, the gist of, of what this says is what people are interested in, in the website. If you look on here. Parks Department, events, Police Department, Water and Sewer, that's all resident. Information, people looking on how to get involved with parks programs, how to, you know, pay your water and sewer bill, that sort of thing. We're in the process of making all of those a better experience for, for residents and users with the new website. I'll have more on that once we, once we get through with the proposal process. Finally, if you guys have feedback tonight, questions, comments, whatever, I'd love to hear it. We're moving forward. I just want to extend the invitation for outreach.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you for all your hard work this year and. I've definitely seen and heard the, the difference, including people I haven't heard from in years calling me when they heard. Us on the Christmas station ninety-three point nine, I got lots of calls, so appreciate all that hard work. Trustee Pierce, do you have any questions?
I think, I think we've done tremendously better than we've done in the past promoting the village. I think that goes directly to his efforts and several other peoples in the village efforts. I don't know, but I know it takes a team, so thank you.
I think we should have a LinkedIn page. We've got professionals looking for us for ponds and whatnot. LinkedIn's a big thing because if you're looking for professional, that's where you go.
I, I think we have one, but we don't have very good.
We're, we're not.
Yeah, we're not active.
Trustee Mason's point, that, that's, there, there's a lot of potential there. But I agree, it's, that, that's where people with money invest in the community, go there, also people looking for employment, so.
Thank you. Trustee Bluthart.
Massive improvement over the past, from what I can tell and. Massive improvement over the past, what I, from what I can tell. And, and I, I applaud you for everything you've been doing. It's been putting in a lot of effort. I appreciate it.
Trustee Berman.
I'm happy to hear about the website being, that it's gonna be a lot more user friendly. Over the years, I've heard a lot of complaints about it and I think that that'll be. Make things a lot easier for residents. And I think that that may even help boost all this other stuff here to the numbers, so.
Thank you. Trustee Domeniac.
I concur with the other trustees. You've done a really great job. Everybody on the, all the staff does a great job, but you really. Highlighted what's here in Antioch. I know that the business owners, particularly on Main Street, are very grateful for. Work that you've done to try and promote the shopping opportunities and dining here in Antioch. I have a related question that's really not specifically directed towards you, but. We're gonna see a calendar of events that the village is gonna be offering this year. And particularly, I'm curious as to, are we gonna do the feastable? The food truck festivals again and are we gonna do the farmer's market?
So I, I have a meeting with Maritza tomorrow morning to talk about the specifics on the food truck. The high level, yes, farmer's market, yes, food truck feastable. The farmer's market, I, I could, will be Thursdays right out here. I, I, off the top of my head, I, and I'll double check with Maritza, I think we're planning the. I wanna say it was four to seven, maybe three to six. I'll double check. But tomorrow, we're gonna finalize the exact dates of the food truck feastable. We've talked about. Kinda, so this past summer, we did it June, July, August, twice a month. What we're talking about doing is expanding it, I think June, July, August and September. We're gonna start it in May and do it once a month, May, June, July and September. With September hitting way as early in the month as we can. Just because this past year, we learned when you deal with football and bad weather, it makes it a lot more difficult to have success.
So, and I don't know, maybe this is a question for Mary. In terms of the, the farmer's market, I mean, has there been any effort? Or when is the schedule for efforts to recruit people because. We can't wait until May to start asking people if they wanna be in our farmer's market. Yes, okay. How is she trying to identify people? Do you know? Cause one suggestion that I have is that she look at who are the vendors at other communities, like the Lake Bluff Farmer's Market is huge. Yep, okay, good.
Alright, alright, thank you. Anything else? If not, Jim, thank you for your, we'll give you all a proverbial pat on the back for your hard work, right? Thank you, appreciate it.
I can't emphasize enough, I'll give a good example, example, trustee Pierce last year was in Waterford, Watertown, Wisconsin with the street banners. And you gave me a call and told me about how nice they looked and, you know, that's one of the things I think about, you know, working on the street banner. So if you guys, especially those of you who travel or out of town, you see something that, oh, this other town's doing this, or even on social media. You know, feel free to send it my way.
Well, and I know Michael Garrigan as well is also working with people on the downtown beautification and Mary's been part of that and I've been part of that, so. Hopefully there's some linkage there that we're not working at cross purposes and collaborating. Cause we've got some things that on the docket for trying to implement some things for downtown. It'll complement that.
Alright, well, thank you. That ends the committee hall. Any other business that anyone wishes to discuss? If not, do I have any requests for executive session?
I do.
Regarding.
Personnel.
Okay, so I have two requests for executive session, both regarding personnel, one from trustee Pierce, one from trustee Masek. I would entertain a motion in a second to go into executive session with no further business to take place after executive session.
Mine was possible, possible.
I'd, I'd like executive session on property acquisition.
Alright, so we have three requests for executive session, two for personnel, one for property acquisition. I entertain a motion in a second to go into executive session with no further business to take place afterwards.
I'll make the motion for personnel and property.
Motion by trustee Pierce, second by trustee Bluthart, roll call, please.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Regular meeting is adjourned for now, going into executive session.